Welcome those who are joining us in the audience, those who are joining us remotely. Do have Councilmember DJ here who is joining us by phone. Councilmember, can you hear us? Councilmember here, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
All right, good, good to hear you. All right, Council, with every meeting, we start typically after the call to order with the invocation. We ask that we would please stand. Ask the Pastor Chris Covington, Country Club Drive Church of Christ, come. I know got my brother instead, so Pastor will get you to lead us.
Yes, sir. Shall we pray? Mighty and merciful Father in heaven, we're grateful and thankful that you allowed us to be here tonight. We thankful for everyone that has come out here, Father, with an interest in this community. We're praying tonight, Father, for the mayor, we're praying for the council, that they will work together, Father, for the betterment of this community here. We're praying that their efforts will be fruitful, that they will be productive. We're praying, Father, that they will be united together as one, as they have a vision for this community here. We pray, Father, that we as a people, as diverse as we are, different backgrounds and different places where we come from, Father, we pray that we will stand behind them, rally behind them, and support them in this effort, that we might make the city of Fayetteville a thriving community once again. And it is in the Jesus's name that we do humbly pray this prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Pastor, you want to give us a few words about you? I know you guys are doing some great work in the community over there at the Church of Christ. You want to tell us a little bit about yourself or your ministry?
Yes, is it okay if I turn and face?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, probably I say about three, four years ago, we had a vision to actually build a community center. And many of you know that during that time, COVID came, the social distancing, many people didn't know what was going on, shutting down businesses, schools closing, even some church doors were closing. So people didn't think it was a wise decision, but we were trusting God in the process. And lo and behold, four years later, we got the center up, and we do have a strong commitment to the community, especially our youth. So there's a lot of things that we have going on there. We have showers in that community center. We have partnered with the Boys and Girls Club there. As a result of partnering with them, we were able to actually start a summer program. So we started it last year, and we actually got 54 kids last year. The parents were so excited about that, they loved it, and so we're looking forward to it again this year to have even more kids. We also have an open gym night on Wednesday nights where we bring the youth in, off the streets, at-risk kids, and they come in there and they play ball and things of that nature. So we just have quite a few things that are going on. God is really blessing that work there, and we're just looking to do greater things for the community of Fayetteville, and so that's our story.
And, you know, he was a bit modest. I actually had opportunity to go over there and to see it in action. And not only do they have a gymnasium where these kids are playing, they have a game room for kids who don't, don't play. So it's full of computers, they have computers that they do their homework, they have classrooms, and they have a whole plethora of services. And so I just want to commend you all for what you're doing. They stepped out on faith on their own dime, and we tried to marry them up with some of the city programs for, for some of that. And I hope that's going well, so we'll check in with you, but we, we thank you for what you're doing, so. All right, Council, as we move to the next item, announcements, this one is a little tough. So I will ask our illustrious clerk, Ms. Pam McGill, to meet me at the podium, please. Well, Council and to, to the public, you know, if you really want to know who runs the city government, it's this lady right here, and Jennifer.
For the last 12 years, when I came here, Ms. Pam has been the same. She's professional every day, she takes her job seriously. The, the historical notes and minutes that come out of everything that we say that's into the history of the city, she's responsible for certifying that that is the case, and we're going to miss her. She certainly put her time in. I'm going to miss her because nights, weekends, or whenever you need her, she's always there, and she's done an excellent job in city first and making sure that we have one of the best administrative teams in, in the country, I would, I would dare to say, highly certified. And so I don't want to take this moment, but I do want to give Council opportunity to speak, because I know all of you have your individual relationships with Ms. Pam, and then we will turn over to her. But before we do that, Ms. Pam, you make sure everybody is taken care of all the time. And so the highest honor and the, the way that we can say thank you on behalf of the City Council and, and all the citizens of this city that have been taken care of for, oh, actually how many years later? So, but on behalf of the Fayetteville City Council and the citizens of Fayetteville, North Carolina, our city key and coin are proudly presented to Pamela McGill. In grateful recognition of her dedicated interest and untiring commitment to the citizens of Fayetteville, thank you for dedicating over 13 years of service in the city of Fayetteville as the city clerk from September 12th, 2011 to January 31st of 2025. So we say thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So being the most seasoned up here other than you, I am going to ask that I am last. So if we could start with Councilmember Benavente?
Gladly, we just go right around the circle. Class, poise, professionalism to the highest degree. Can't say enough about, you know, how many times when this job was confusing, or I was trying to figure some stuff out that I found a welcome home in your office. A truly, truly wise one who's, again, just, just helped, I think, lead a lot of us on this dais through decisions. And again, just that, that secret hand, that, that, that behind the scenes, you know, it just, it's, I can't say enough about how, what a pleasure it's been to work with Pam and just, she really exemplifies what it means to be someone in this work and to dedicate your life and to just be a consummate professional at all levels. So, thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pam, thank you so much for being who you are. I tell a lot of people all the time that the elected officials seem like they get all the attention. But if you ever wanted to know where you're going, you have to know where you came from, and you have to know the history about a lot of items, whether they're councilman's request or no matter what they are. And she is the one that will give you the history behind everything that you're trying to propose. So with your tutelage as a new council member, I truly, truly will never forget the conversations that we had in your office, the hugs that you gave me when I was being stressed out. I thank you for all that you do. You are a consummate professional, and we are truly going to miss you as you depart.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pam, thank you so much. Of course, this is my first time, but you are one of my listening ears when these guys frustrate me. So I appreciate you. I appreciate you. Not only will the city miss you, but the staff, this council will miss you. And of course, we will definitely miss your exit, because I love it. So we'll miss you.
Oh, Councilmember Gray.
Thank you.
Pam, I will, I will probably say, maybe I was the, in this group, maybe Malik and I, Councilmember Davis and I, were the most needy recently. But you were always, always answered all of our questions, like with a smile. And even in an email, I could hear her smile come through, and that says a lot about somebody's character. You are just always attentive to each of us and quick responses, and we will truly miss you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, Pam. So I don't have to say much about your personality and your character, as everyone's heard already. But every time I think about Pam, I think about my first year on council, we went, was it Kansas City? Was it Kansas City?
Yeah.
Oh, we had a ball, and you know, she, she just cut us off just like that. But every time I travel, I look for you to be with us, and I just wanted to let you know, we had such a good time. And I just wanted to let you know, we had such a good time together. I still have those photos, and I'll be sending them to you and to all the council members to remind them of what fun we had. So, look, I'll miss you, Pam, so much. You're such a great person.
Pam, 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 it has been a pleasure to work with you. I hope, you know, wish you the best of luck on your retirement. Please come and visit us. I'll make sure to reach out to you so we can maybe have lunch, a glass of wine, maybe. But I just want you to know that I truly appreciate you. I think I spent more time in your office than I spent with city managers. So just thank you for always being, no sense, when I come to City Hall, that's one of the first places I go when I sit, and we just have great conversations. So I would definitely miss that. And just like Councilmember Malik Davis mentioned, your accent is unforgettable. But again, just thank you for just being a person that you are genuine and honest and authentic. So keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you.
What can I say that my colleagues haven't already said? There's a lot of rock stars in the city of Fayetteville on the staff, and you're the pinnacle of that and a model for all of us. So big shoes to fill. Thank you for all that you've done.
And Councilmember here? Councilmember here? unmuted?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for this opportunity. I'm still a little getting over, a little flu bug. But Ms. McGill, you and I go way back. I was honored to be one of the ones to welcome you to City Hall. One thing that I love and I still appreciate today, that you have been rather, you know how to be discreet and how to force into the side and whisper something in the ear that maybe doesn't need to be heard abroad. And I've always appreciated that about you. It's my prayer and my hope that God will continue to bless you and your family, that you have a good time. And hopefully that I'll be feeling about 100% because I want to see you tomorrow. And God bless you. And I'm totally going to miss you. Have a great retirement.
Thank you, Councilmember here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I appreciate everybody letting me go last. It's really hard when you've been somewhere for so long and one of the first people that you meet, that what all, everybody said here is you were probably our first line of defense on everything that we had to learn here in the city. And I know that when you came in, I think you were here maybe a little less than a year when I came on. And the trips, the business trips, the Washington trips, going up to Capitol Hill together, and just learning it all through your eyes. But what I did want to say, there's two things about Pam that I think everybody up here knows, but a lot of people don't know. She wasn't only, you know, she wasn't only the clerk, she took care of us. And we were in Washington one time, and I was on some kind of new medication going on, and I was so sick. And she stopped everything, and everybody went on, she took care of everybody. And I don't know if you remember this, we were walking the streets of DC to try to find me some medicine that my doctor had told me to get. And she was not giving up. I was like, I'll be fine. And she was like, no. But what was so, she's so professional that she had everybody moving where they needed to be, but was also helping me move where I needed to be. So I appreciate that. And I will tell you, this is a hard one. I didn't think I would get emotional. But you, and I, and Mr. Chris, we had a great relationship. So I'm going to miss you. But if you want to hear her voice in about six months, when she gets some, you can call an affair to remember, because she will be answering the phone. So thank you for all your work. And if you don't come to work, I'm coming with a recorder so you can be her person.
Oh, we know what if I find you now?
But thank you, you are a true professional with class and grace.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, before Pam jumps in as well, I'd just like to say as well, on behalf of the staff, we will miss you, Pam. But as all of you know, the sacrifices that staff members make, they don't make them alone. Joining her tonight are her husband Todd, Todd, daughter Nicola, and I guess Olivia, I was going to say granddaughter, but semi feels that way. And they're looking forward to having a lot of time with Pam as well. She is in the neighborhood, so you'll see her walking around, she and Todd with the dogs as well. A little known fact as well is that when she was hired here 13 years ago, we had to dissuade her from putting on her business card that she was the city secretary. Instead, it is the city clerk. And as the Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, we had a wonderful trip to Washington DC that year. That's the same year that we got stopped at security at the African American History Museum because our clerk had a butter knife in her purse that had fallen. And we all wondered, and she kept saying, a knife, a knife, a knife. But once we got that finished, we had a wonderful trip. But Pam, as everyone said, for your discretion, for your friendship, and for your utmost professionalism, you will be missed, and you have set a high pinnacle for your replacement.
I did write a few notes down, but first of all, thank you, Mayor, council, city manager, for this very prestigious award. I have put together many of these over the years, and this is just the biggest honor I could receive from the city. So thank you so much. I wanted to say, Mayor Colvin, Mayor Pro Tem Jensen, city council, city manager, city attorney, colleagues, family and friends. It has truly been an honor and a privilege to have served as a city clerk for the city of Fayetteville for the past 13-plus years. It has been an adventure, no two days the same, no two council meetings ever the same. It has been a journey that has given me so many opportunities to learn and grow with the city. I wish to thank you, Mayor Colvin, and city council members. It's been a pleasure working with all of you and getting to know you and many former council members as well. I need to thank my right-hand woman of the past eight-plus years, Deputy Clerk Jennifer Eyre, soon to be our new city clerk. I don't think there's anybody in this room that is more prouder of her and her accomplishments than me. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you to all my colleagues, and a very big special thank you to our city manager, Mr. Doug Hewitt. Doug was on the interview panel when I was hired, so thank you for inviting me to join your team. It's been an eventful journey, and it's been great. And I'm glad you didn't fire me over that butter knife. And most importantly, I need to thank my family for always being there. My daughter Nicola, my kind of granddaughter Olivia, and my husband Todd. He has the patience of a saint. He listens politely to all of my City Hall stories and sagas.
Oh, Lord.
Except the closed sessions. And I love you, Todd. Thank you.
Pam. Yeah, Pam.
Two rows, can we scooch this way a little bit? Perfect. Yeah, yeah. Somebody's got to start singing something, Cupid Shuffle. Great, perfect.
All right, well, thank you. Yes, 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 definitely. Look, people don't realize, we've spent three Mondays a month plus additional meetings for the last 13 years, and y'all have loaned her to us, so we appreciate that.
It's our great pleasure, man.
Got somebody to take the picture? Oh, yeah. She's pretty good. All right, well, thank you so much. So council, as we move now to the next item, city manager's report. Birthday boy. Tell us about it.
Mayor, Pam did steal somewhat of my thunder. One of the joys of being city manager is being able to appoint people who you know are going to do a fantastic job for the city. And it was an obvious choice to me that Jennifer Eyre would take the reins after Pam McGill. Pam has trained her. And congratulations, trying to be a clerk. In addition to that as well, as I mentioned on a more somber note, we have, and our community had a number of homicides since January 1st. And Mayor, if council would indulge me, I would ask Chief Brayden to come forward and to speak to council and maybe answer some questions that you may have as well. Chief Brayden?
Good evening, Mayor, council. I've had several phone calls over the past couple of weeks from members of council and the mayor, you know, inquiring about some of the homicides that have been made the news or on social media. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight about these homicides, hopefully clear up some misconceptions and give us a better understanding of what's going on in our city right now. Every loss of human life is tragic and deserves to be analyzed to ensure the Fayetteville Police Department is utilizing the proper efforts to solve these crimes and to ensure that any further acts of violence are curtailed. But there, so far in January of 2025, there have been eight total homicides in the first 24 days. And the investigations tell us these aren't random acts of violence that have occurred throughout our city. Seven of the eight have been solved, warrants sought, and suspects arrested. In each of those cases, the suspect and victims were known to one another. We currently have the one that occurred during the snow, this evening of snow last week that we're still working on. Without going into great details of the investigations, I can confirm that two of the incidents were crimes of passion with no history of domestic violence. Two were negligible handling of firearms, two were lifestyle-related incidents, and one incident was a mental health crisis. Again, these are not random acts of violence, and they are not random deaths occurring within our city. These incidents are consistent with domestic violence, and these incidents are a contrast to the domestic violence and retaliation-style violence we experienced in 2023 when we had a total of 52 homicides that we investigated. Again, if you remember, we talked about some of the retaliatory stuff from our youth, the gangs, and things of that nature. These don't fit that bill, and we're dealing with something totally different. We currently are continuing all programs and efforts that were successful in reducing homicides by nearly 50% in 2024. We continue to partner with people like the Phoenix Center in regards to domestic violence. When I give the quarterly report, you'll see there's been a significant reduction in overall incidents reported and domestic-related homicides. We plan on focusing our faith and action efforts this year in areas most prone to violence. We continue with our prolific offender violent offender programs, tracking offenders most likely to commit acts of recidivism and violence. And we're pushing to ensure that the staffing remains appropriate in our homicide unit and our capers, our robbery and our aggravated assault units, so that we can investigate these and get those solved as soon as possible. We will continue to monitor these homicides and other violent crime offenses in our weekly ComStat meetings. That's where we meet, and we talk about prime trends, what is the driving force behind the issues that we're seeing within our community from week to week. Again, I stand here tonight to tell you that I don't see any current trends of any retaliatory violence, youth violence, gang violence, that the police department could have a direct impact on reducing as we move forward in 2025. Are there any questions?
We do have a couple, chief. Start with Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, and then Benevente.
Thank you, chief. Like you mentioned, it is unfortunate that there have been eight homicides, but you did mention that there were seven arrests. Was that correct? Seven arrests? So I just want to commend you all. I mean, again, although it was eight homicides, seven arrests were made. So that's seven individuals that are off the street. So I just want to commend you and your department for your efforts.
Thank you. And we've been committed to that high clearance rate and making sure that we are solving these cases. I think that is the greatest deterrent that we have when people know that they can't commit a shooting or a homicide within the city of Fayetteville without going unprosecuted.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Brayden, I think you, was it the last quarterly report that you shared with us that 10% decrease in overall crime? And I think that's something that you and your staff are right to be proud of. I've seen, just because of the sort of influx in these last two weeks or first two weeks of January, that moment that we should be proud of is sort of being, you know, weaponized, is sort of being made to look like in contrast, like how can you say things are down 10% when we've got this? How would you respond to those kinds of criticisms? Because, you know, you've, beyond just your time as the chief of police, you know, you've studied this stuff. You've got a background in criminology, and I feel like there's time for us to, at some point, have these kinds of almost educations for people to kind of understand better how this stuff works. Like, can we talk about trends? And, you know, why, just because we went down 10% doesn't mean this is impossible to have happened this first month.
So I think when we talk about how we compare our successes, we usually do that year to year. Okay? I can assure you, right now, the homicide unit is not resting on the clearance that they had for 2024. They're going back, and as we assess these, we didn't just look at the first eight in 2025. You know, we had discussions about the ones right prior to the new year, the McDonald's homicide that occurred over there off Santa Fe Drive. You know, how do they relate to one another? But unfortunately, you know, we have to have a start and a stop where we actually keep tabs and we keep tally of what we've accomplished. I would say, like anything else, yes, we could have a rough start to the year, it's how we end the year that we usually gauge ourselves upon. Again, you know, we're assessing what needs to be done, what we could have done as a police department to prevent some of the homicides that have occurred so far this year. But unfortunately, you know, the best we can do is hope that the programs that we do have in place work, that we're on top of any trends, any locations, prolific offenders, and we're tracking any type of retaliatory violence to prevent that. You know, again, I think that's where we need to keep our focus. Like I said, we've already taken a look at some of our programs, how we're going to tweak and adjust those moving forward in 2025. The last year and a half, we've really focused on overdose deaths within our community with the Faith in Action program. I think that we, it's time for us to take a look at where we have a bulk majority of our shootings, our homicides, and focus those efforts of the Faith in Action group towards those crimes this year and see what kind of impact we have there. We continue to partner with the Phoenix Center, who follows up on our domestic violence homicides. You know, a quarter of the ones in 2023 were domestic-related. I think there was only a total of three all of 2024 that were domestic-related. As I, like I said, as I present the year-end report for 2024, you'll see that just about all areas of domestic violence are down by significant numbers, 20%, 30%. So again, we gotta stay the focus on what has been successful for us. And like anything else, you know, there's gonna be the ebbs and flows of what happens within our community. We just have to be ready and prepared to adjust the way we handle those things.
Yeah, no, I welcome that kind of just matter-of-fact point about that, right? I mean, the idea that we're going to get to a place of success, 10% down, and that there's not gonna be any sort of ground given back. I mean, these things, you know, are just macro in that way, and we've got to address them. I hope that, you know, as a city council, we can continue to support the focused work that you guys do by addressing issues of housing insecurity, job insecurity, and childcare insecurity. When those three things are addressed, I think that takes a huge bite out of the kind of issues that lead people to these types of, you know, antisocial behaviors and what we call crime. So I'm hoping that we can do more to do that so that you guys can focus on what y'all do.
Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. Councilmember McNair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say to the Chief, thank you. This is perfect timing, because I've had quite a few calls about the crime in District 7. And so it explains the type of crime, which makes a big difference, which domestic and violent crime, they all play different acts. And just to explain that to the public means a lot. And also having the officers to appear on the radio and talking to the community about that really helps in the community especially. There's a lot of crime in District 7, and I appreciate that.
And yes, we've entertained, we've went out to a couple of the community watch that have been affected by some of the incidents that occurred out in our community. So anytime that we can go out and help, you know, with the the message of what is causing, what is driving, what the police department's doing to address those issues, we'll step up and do those things.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember McNair. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. You guys always do a great job, and you guys always attend my chat and choose and give my constituents all the answers that they're looking for. But I wanted to ask you about the trends that you was talking about. Do you think any of these crimes are attributed to it being the holiday season?
No, again, without going into great detail on the crimes specifically, a lot of these are still being investigated, and the detectives have some things they have to wrap up. I think the key point is, is these aren't random acts of violence. It's not something that we know in specific areas being, has problems, and we should have been in that area dealing with that situation. A lot of these are in areas, if you look inside neighborhoods, that there are close relationships between the suspect and the offender. So again, I think that those are key to take into consideration of, you know, what opportunity we have to intervene in these type of situations. And unfortunately, the police department has little opportunity in the ones that we've seen so far in 2025. Again, we'll stay focused on the areas that we know crime proliferates within our city, where violent crime occurs, where we know the shots are being fired, where we know that we have gang activity, and that's how we'll, the strategies we'll use to combat overall violent crime throughout the remainder of the year. And hopefully, our numbers end up close to what they were in the previous years.
Well, thank you for that, Chief, and also remember, if there's anything that this council can do to help you move those trends in the right direction, always feel free to let us know.
Yes, sir.
Chief, before we let you go, I just kind of want to recap on a couple of things you said, and this was mentioned today during the interview about this very topic. So basically, you're saying seven out of eight have been cleared, so roughly over 90, 92, 93%
Correct.
solve rate, and your overall clearance rate, meaning that the ones you solved last year was what? It was high 90s, mid 90s?
So we did have, I think it was three between Christmas and New Year's. We still have those that we're working on. So, but yes, for the last three, going on three years, we've had close to 90% or higher on our clearance rates for homicides. We have higher than the national average in our clearance rates for aggravated assaults and robberies. Usually, those run about 20 to 40%. We've been consistently in that 60 to 70% mark.
Right, and then the other part is, as we were talking about this, so just to make sure I'm clear for the listening audience, if me and a friend are mishandling the firearm and it goes off, that's considered a homicide even though it was
Correct.
accidental. So that comes into the numbers, the gun safety, the gun storage, and so part of what the discussion was today is that there's but so much law enforcement can do, there's some community participation needed to secure our firearms, to teach gun safety and those kinds of things. Speak to a little bit about how it is that we're getting that message out, because as, you know, we're a military community, the laws are changing to make it easier for gun ownership. I'm not gonna get down, go down that road with that. You know, I'm a gun owner myself and believe everybody has a Second Amendment right. There are responsibilities that come with that. Speak to, are we putting the message out, the importance of securing firearms and keeping them safe?
Yes, so when we talk about, and I gotta give Councilwoman McNair her props on this, since day one in office, she's harassed me for gun locks and whatever I can bring out to any of her events. And we do, we have Operation Ceasefire Movie Nights, where we try, we have our Educating Kids on Guns program. You know, we had our movie, The Crux, that we really highlighted last year. I think there was over a dozen viewings of The Crux in our Cumberland County school system that was open for not just the kids, but for the parents as well. So we could talk about the issues that we address as the Fayetteville Police Department on not just gun safety, but the guns were a predominant message throughout that movie. So, you know, we had our Safe Space to Play last summer and the summer before. Again, you know, we're constantly looking at ways to get our message out, to talk to the youth, to talk to the public, educate them about gun safety, you know. In previous years' history, we've had a problem with larceny of firearms from motor vehicles. We put those out. If you go look at our social media pages, we're constantly talking about the crimes that are affecting our community, ways to safeguard yourself against being a victim, whether it's, you know, the holiday season, how, you know, where to shop, how to shop, to securing your cars, the 9:00 PM routine, we're constantly, you know, trying to get out and get those messages across to our public.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Davis.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to share my sentiments and thank you for the work that you and your team do. Out of those crimes that happened recently, were any juveniles involved in those? Was there any juveniles in the midst of any of those?
So if you're talking about the eight homicides that occurred since January, no, there's no, would Lee Lee's statutory be classified as a juvenile?
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Just want to make sure, am I correcting that since Chief?
All right, thank you.
All right. Chief, doesn't look like we have any more questions. Thank you for that.
Thank you for the time.
Keep up the good work. All right, Council, moving to 6.0, the approval of the agenda, if we could have a motion, Councilmember Benevente.
Move to approve the agenda.
All right, it's motion by Councilmember Benevente. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Hondros. Those, any discussion on the motion? Huh? Can we do that under consent? Or we need to do it before that? Yeah, I think when we get to consent, we've got some. Okay. I'm coming. All right. All right, Council, look to you for action on approval of the agenda.
Green, Mayor.
All right, thank you. That is unanimous. All right, Council, Councilmember McNair needs to be excused for previous commitment. Can we have a motion to excuse her? There's a motion by Councilmember Hondros. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Thompson. I'm voting against that. All right. Any discussion on the motion? All right, Council, I'll look to you for your votes.
Green.
All right. Who didn't vote? Well, that's only eight. It's two. Oh, green, okay. All right. All right. All right, all right, Council, moving to the consent section. I'll go to Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to pull 7.0A4 and 7.0A9. The adoption of the historic district design standards associated with text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance. Take that back to a work session for discussion. And Phase 5 annexation, Area 32 East, Section 1, Resolution confirming assessment role and levy assessments for further discussion.
All right, it's a motion by Mayor Pro Tem to approve with the exception of 7.084 and 7.089. Any discussion on that? Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, is that second? All right. Council, any discussion on that? All right. I'll look to you for your action, for votes. Councilmember here.
Green, Mayor.
All right, motion carries 9.0. Moving to next item of business, reports, Boards of Commissions, the Fayetteville Cumberland Human Relations Department Annual Report. Ms. Shamil.
Excuse me, Mayor Colvin. I apologize. For the A4, we're gonna did I hear that that's going to a work session?
Yes.
So could we please have a motion to table it?
Want a separate action for that?
If you don't mind, just a motion to table it to the work session, please, and then the other one, the A9, we're gonna have discussion now?
It was to table, I think there was some
Table both of those?
Penning information, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Just a motion to table them both, please, then, thank you.
I understand you want it clean. I got it. All right.
I apologize, Madam Attorney. So I would like to pull
Well, a motion for, you've already pulled, so a motion for 704 and 089.
I would like to make a motion for 7.0A4 and 7.0A9. For further discussion.
Councilmember Hondros is asking to separate them.
Okay. So I would
The motion is just to table them to, is it a time certain, we're gonna do it next work session?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just to table it to the next work session.
And I need to do them separately.
Councilmember Hondros would like for it to be done separately.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion to table 7.0A4 to go to the, to a work session.
To the upcoming work.
To the upcoming work session. February 3rd.
All right, is there a second? Second by Councilmember Thompson. Discussion on that? All right, Council, look to you for your votes on 7.084. All right, Councilmember here, we need you again.
Green, Mayor.
All right. All right, motion carries. All right, Mayor Pro Tem, 7.089.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to table 7.0A9 to, for the next work session on February 3rd.
Okay, all right, is there a second to that?
Second.
All right, second by Councilmember Thompson, I believe. All right, discussion on that? Okay, Council, look to you for action on 7.089.
Green, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember here. Who are we missing? Okay, all right, 6.2, voting opposition, Benevente and Hondros, so we'll see those two items here in about a week. All right, moving to the reports from Fayetteville Cumberland Human Relations Department Annual Report. Ms. Shamil, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Senior Leadership. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to bring you our annual report. I am going to introduce and have our Chairwoman, Donna Pelham, actually provide the report to you. Ms. Pelham has been a professor of both accounting and business administration at Methodist for 17 years. She is also the Department Chairwoman for Business Administration, Management, and Marketing. This is her third time being appointed to the Commission. She served from 2017 to 19, from 20 to 22, and she has come back again in 2024. Thank you. Chairwoman.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, City Manager, staff, thank you for having me. Let me see if I can get this going so y'all can see it. Perfect. This slide is an overview of what the Human Relations Department does, which includes many more things than the Commission. So this is under Director Nazar's purview, but most importantly, what I'm here to speak to is the liaison to the Human Relations Commission. The Commission's mission is to facilitate and advocate programs, projects, and actions to ensure better quality of life and the civil and human rights of all residents, regardless of race, sex, religion, creed, national origin, age, familial status, or disability. With the assistance, and that's an understatement, of department staff, the Commission provides the City Council and County Commissioners with advice on improving human relations and encourages harmony and community unity among racial, religious, and ethnic groups. Here are some of the highlights from the last fiscal year. And some of these were before I was installed, but I did attend. The community conversation with Jane Elliott was held out at Methodist University in November of 2023. Ms. Elliott is was an educator and has spent her life, she is in her 90s now, as an anti-racist educator. She implemented the exercise known as the Blue Eyes, Brown Eyes exercise after the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in 1968. And so having, hearing her story was truly an incredible event. That is one of the things. This one, our annual awards luncheon is held everywhere, every February. And I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that we are selling tickets. It's February 13th, I believe. And the Commission recognizes award winners who go above and beyond in our community throughout the greater Fayetteville area to promote harmony and positive human relations. These awards include many things, including the Youth Award, the Educator Award, Individual Award, Lifetime Award, and others. So for point of reference, the awards that were just decided upon and which we'll give out in February, we had well over 100 applications or nominations for those awards, which is amazing commitment from our community. Another thing we do every year is the Denim Day Luncheon. The Commission hosts this in April, and it is a profound and moving experience to attend this event which brings awareness to sexual violence. So that is something that is upcoming as well. And it is the last Wednesday in every April. The tickets that we're selling that I mentioned, and I will keep promoting those, is to fund our endowment, our scholarship awards. And we hand out awards to seniors who are graduating in our community, and with the money that we raise at our awards luncheon, last year, we were able to fund, I believe it was nine awards. They're not all represented here, they weren't all there, but those are so that our seniors can go out and pursue their higher education. So it is a really amazing event. This last year, it was held at the Bill Chris Center. So a lot of, really happy, happy event. In September, we had a three-day event. The Department hosted the 2024 Statewide Human Rights and Civil Rights Conference at Fayetteville Tech. The two-day event, to begin with, brought together human and civil rights professionals from across the state with diverse backgrounds to discuss issues, critical issues with regard to these rights. And it was very well attended. On the subsequent day, the third day, we had a Bias Incidents and Hate Crimes Forum, which is also very well attended. Some of you see yourself up there. The Department hosted the Bias Incident and Hate Crimes Forum also at Fayetteville Tech. It was facilitated by the U.S. Department of Justice and the U.S. Attorney's Office, featuring a surprise appearance by Michael Easley Jr., the U.S. Attorney for the Eastern District of North Carolina, who spoke on the importance of heightened awareness of hate crimes across our state. This event also included a panel of family members and advocates for the Charleston Nine, who were gunned down in 2015 by a white supremacist. Also a very moving event. Our Dining and Dialogue was held in October of 2024. The Department Commission hosted the event centering on the theme Understanding and Respect Commission hosted the event centering on the theme, Understanding and Respecting Your LGBTQ+ Neighbors. Uh, previous themes included navigating, uh, lunch while blind or visually impaired and Meet Your Muslim Neighbor. Those are just a few of the highlights before I move on, uh, to giving, you can see the time, but we manboothed at festivals to educate and interact with our community, including festivals like the Dogwood Festival. Um, we want to be out there in our community and educate them as far as what the Department does and what the Commission does. The numbers you see, the hours contributed, twelve fifty-nine and almost twenty-nine thousand dollars, that doesn't include the countless hours that your currently seventeen Commissioners on the Human Relations Commission put in within their own areas of expertise in the community, including addressing things like gun violence, uh, gun violence awareness, autism awareness, um, working the polls, voting polls, going to community watch, watch events, countless other things. So as a group, we do a whole lot, and then individually, we make it a point to get out in our community. So. Um, in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, the staff investigated thirteen cases, which included ADA complaints, allegations of discrimination in housing, and other matters of assistance requested. They also assisted with over a thousand calls and conducted training sessions for thirty-five local agencies. To also say that, uh, Director Nazar and her staff are busy is an understatement. They, uh, do amazing work. So with that, I'll ask if there are any questions?
Thank you so much. Uh, Councilmember here and then Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just wanted to highlight and say thank you to our Commission, uh, for their report. But just one additional thing is, one of our objectives as a council and objective as the Appointments Committee was to make sure that our boards and commissions come before us and make reports, uh, uh, that, that we could hear what their objectives, the objectives that were given them and what goals that they had to meet. And tonight was just another, uh, great report from, uh, where our citizens volunteered to come forward, uh, and to sit on these boards. And so I just wanted to thank our committee tonight, and we've got many, many others coming. We just finalized, uh, the closing of a few applications for boards that are still out there, and hopefully we'll be bringing some additional citizens forward soon as our new board, uh, and Commission members. So thank you to our human relations, and thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this might be for the Director, this might be for our City Manager, but I'm trying to understand historically, this, um, department, um, there was a gentleman, Dr. Wade. Is that where this all started?
No, sir. Um, the earliest Director I can remember for Human Relations was, um, former Representative Floyd. I think he actually held the job. And before that, um, I think he may have been the first, I'm not sure. But it's, uh, City of Fayetteville has one of the longest-standing Human Relations Commissions and Departments in the state, and one of the few remaining as well.
We go back to the sixties.
Now, at least in recent memory, um, Mr. Manager, or certainly for our Director, whoever would like to answer, um, historically, I guess let's start there. Um, have they come into, has this department come into play when it comes to certain policies? Like, I can just think offhand, maybe there was an effort around the market house at one point more recently that I can recall. But is there a sort of a claim to fame that this department can really say that they kind of influenced policy?
Um, the department has, um, always been, I think, um, a standout in the state. Um, going back to my original time here in Fayetteville in two thousand and four, uh, we were doing, um, uh, dialogues, uh, we're doing dining and dialogue now. Um, they did help extensively, as you mentioned, um, with, um, the market house and the repurposing effort. Um, and they, more importantly, they stand ready to assist the council and the community and when called upon. Um, I think that, um, like a lot of boards and commissions, um, they really do appreciate the opportunity to present to you, and they also look forward to feedback from council as to areas that you believe that they might, could help, uh, the citizens and, and such. But Yamil, if you don't mind, um, coming forward as well, I, um, Dr. Anthony Wade was an amazing individual, but he was also, um, in many ways, trained Yamil, and Yamil has moved farther, um, uh, organization further as well. So I'd ask her, could you help, uh, answer that question as well?
Sure. Um, the, the city actually created the Commission in nineteen sixty-eight and soon thereafter gave it a, a staff. We are one of very few jurisdictions who has both a Commission and a staff. Most, we have about thirty-two Commissions across the state of North Carolina, but only about a little over half a dozen who have staff. And I just found out this morning that Orange County has given up their Fair Housing Assistance Program with HUD, and we are in the position to hopefully get that status, which also brings funds to the city.
Could you speak more to that?
The Fair Housing Assistance Program is in a local agreement with the federal government, HUD in particular. And what they do is that they provide funding for Human Relations Departments to conduct anti-discrimination investigations in housing, and each case is paid for.
When you talk about training for local agencies, then that was mentioned towards the end, what kind of training?
It depends on what the agency requests, as long as it's within our jurisdiction, such as sexual harassment, hostile work environments, DEI, things of that nature. Employment discrimination law, housing discrimination law, if it's a housing provider.
And so I guess I would want to see that in the report, right? Like, if we did all this housing discrimination, I think you said at the end, you said, how many people got investigated for something?
Well, it's either fair housing or, um, ADA. Thirteen cases in the last fiscal year, and thirty-five agencies were trained.
Yeah, so that's a slide. That's a slide to me that I'd want to see. I know it got mentioned. Um, but a breakdown into that, I think is going to be a little bit more substantive for me than when I was reviewing the slideshow, um, you know, ahead of this meeting. Um, and I just, I just have some general comments, I guess, when it comes time. I think that's all for my questions.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Hondros?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, question, uh, my colleague's questions kind of sparked a question for me. So the cases that were heard, are they heard by staff or are they heard by the Commission?
The Commission doesn't hear those cases. We get a report of the numbers.
Just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, the Department, the staff investigates. I'm actually in the process of training two staff people to do the investigations.
Thank you.
And a lot of those, I might say, have to do with privacy issues in terms of what could be disclosed on a slide. So, all right. The Department and Commission respectfully request that City Council accept this report as presented.
All right. Um, let's see, any further questions, Council? Do you have a motion?
I had a comment.
Oh, Mayor Pro Tem?
I just had a comment. I, I just wanted to say thank you and for the listening audience out, um, in TV land and here. Um, a lot of things that people don't realize about the Human Relations Commission is, it is literally a gem for us. And we really, during twenty twenty, during everything that was happening in our nation and our state and our city, we learned that boards and commissions were so important and the people there. And I will tell you, when we went to, um, Denver for part of the All American City Awards, our Human Relations Commission shined, and people were in awe of how much work that you did to help us get through twenty twenty and all the things that were going on. So thank you for all the work that you're doing and making it a gem for other people in other cities that realize that we do have a great thing going. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Benevente?
Well, I was going to go ahead and make the motion, and then I had discussion.
All right, so.
Move to accept.
All right. Is motion by Councilmember Benevente to accept. Is there a second by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin? All right, discussion. Councilmember Benevente?
Thank you. Uh, and just to clarify, I don't need the details of the investigation to violate anyone's privacy. Um, but if you guys are doing real substantive work, that's what you guys should show. Um, I've got to really stand firmly against the comments that were made about, um, the summer of twenty twenty and what the Human Relations Commission did or didn't do. Um, as someone who is a member of the, uh, you know, um, activist community at the time, we were sort of, um, frustrated with human relations. And maybe this, that frustration is misplaced because it was really the majority of City Council at the time, um, that took away options from the people and made it so that there were only, um, very narrow, uh, discussion points that could be had. Um, and so my concern is that, at best, the Human Relations Commission is used as a convenient tool, and at worst, um, you know, it, it ends up just kind of doing things that, um, we don't have to pay necessarily three hundred thousand dollars a year for, uh, with some of these events. Um, so as we're getting in tight into, into a tight budget season, um, it's something that I want us to keep in mind.
Ladies, if you're looking at this right now, you beautiful with the natural. We have an exclusive story.
What is that? Is my phone? Oh, mute him.
That, you know, when we're looking at this upcoming budget season, that we really think critically about, um, what we're investing in. Um, I think that there have been many times when I would have loved to have seen a Human Relations Commission step up and help dictate policy in a way that, um, really does do what I think on paper its mission is and what I think the members of the, uh, Appointed Board believe in. Um, but I think more often than not, um, you guys are sort of sidelined in a way that doesn't take seriously what you guys do. But when it does help sort of cover up something that the city isn't doing right, then you guys get deployed. Um, and I don't know if that's worth a three hundred thousand dollar a year investment at this point.
All right. Well, thank you, Councilmember Benevente. Let me follow that up. Uh, you had something?
I did. With all due respect, the, your Commission, we are volunteers. So as far as the Department's budget, that is beyond our control. And so please remember that we are community members, we have other jobs, we do this, and it is a very active Commission, and we do it as volunteers.
I'm responding to you. All right. Thank you. Um, and for every, every member of the Board that designates their time, uh, on a volunteer basis, thank you, Yamil. In a day that we're looking at a country that doesn't think is important enough to talk about equality on so many levels, uh, from federal, we're seeing that discussion change, uh, that will trickle down to the states. At the end of the day, uh, this is the most, one of the most diverse communities in the country. Uh, twenty twenty was a choppy time that I was sitting right here, and believe you me, for our community to turn out the way we did, a lot of it was attributed to the volunteers and the people that went out in this community when times were tough, to have tough conversations. And it may not have been something that was positively received by both sides. That's what compromise looks like. But we're a melting pot, and we're a community that overcame that, and to be where we are today, after what could have, Fayetteville could have looked like in spite of, uh, I, I appreciate the work you did. And I know that now more than ever, since resources are being rolled back federally and state, that the local level is the last backstop to making sure that people in the community have somewhere to go to when they feel discriminated against in a housing situation or, and so, um, you know, I do take exception to some of that perspective, but I did want to let you know that you are appreciated with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. All right, Councilmember Benevente, you had a response to the response quickly, and then we need to-
Absolutely. Yeah, I, we welcome the, um, individuals who volunteer their time. Um, when I, before I got involved with the elective role, I was on a board for folks under forty. And, you know, if we were given, I think, the opportunity to really offer our perspective, to see we're a much better place, I think if all the volunteer members were really given, um, real authority, you know, in, in, this city would be a much better place. That's not what's happening. Um, I don't think that our boards and commissions' advice is taken very seriously. It's taken conveniently, um, when it, when it suits, um, what I think, um, you know, a majority here welcomes. And sometimes I think that it's y'all's place to challenge what the majority is saying. If they're not going far enough, then you got to push us further. Um, when we have disparate stops and searches within our police department, and the mayor talks about equality, I want to hear him talk about equality when we're talking about that topic. There, there's a lot of instances where issues of equality come up within the City Council, but whenever it's convenient, just in, like you saw right now in this conversation, you guys get brought up. So I don't like this sort of facade and this sort of check the box that Human Relations currently occupies when it's convenient. Um, and so that's what I'm hoping to challenge the same way I hope you guys can challenge me back and say, no, we're going to maybe step up more. We're going to be a little bit more vocal. We're going to demand a lot more, um, you know, work on these different fronts as it relates to public safety or some other issues. Um, but if you guys aren't going to do that, and you guys are just going to kind of be a, um, like a rubber stamp, I think, for when it's convenient, then that's the question I have, whether or not the investment is worth it.
All right. Well, thank you. No need to respond. He said enough. Uh, but, uh, so Council, I'll look to you. Call a question, let's vote. All right.
Green, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
All right, Council, uh, motion to adjourn. All right.